Call to order, roll call. At 7:00.
That's off, that's right. Okay. So, Mary Ann, Rachel Lyons.
Here.
Kyle Campbell.
Here.
Brian Mason.
Here.
Barbara Pennell.
Present.
Genevieve Rodzik.
Here.
Steve Vitalek.
Here.
And Tracy Baikowski. If everyone is present, as well as Jeff Schrader, later. Okay. Approval of the agenda. We'll have one right off the bat. Set the public hearing for the sign ordinance finalization. We're going to strike that. And then we're going to have... We'll replace that with sign ordinance discussion. There won't be any action. Does anybody else have anything else to like that?
No, still approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Brian, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Public comments on agenda items. Carol?
Ah, we may have dealt with your business and whatnot. The fellow from the county isn't here, you don't need him.
Yeah, he's at the end.
Plan, Jeff Schrader.
Oh, cool.
We've spoken on the phone.
I have talked to him on the phone, I... Yeah. You know, I'm her...
He's better looking than purpose.
On purpose?
In person.
I have to talk to you about a problem with land ownership here.
Okay. Um, so we're going to add that to the bottom to see if was that planned as an agenda? For, um...
Question on public comments?
Yeah, three...
Oh, it was two. Um, okay. We're going to go back to agenda. Um, we'll put it after planners' report.
What are you adding?
Public comments.
Public comments.
Then, it disappeared again.
Oh. So it went from the bottom to the top and removed.
Yeah, probably, yeah, we added public comments on the jet items and public comments on the agenda.
Yeah, we just had our public comments. So, um, so I need a friendly motion or a friendly amendment from Mr. Pennell.
Uh, yes.
And a friendly amendment from Mr. Mason.
For.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome. Okay. Approval of the minutes for July 3rd, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries. Hey, communication correspondence workshop. Nothing. Matters of consideration, old business, nothing. New business, um, to set a public hearing for rezoning of Chris Holsbeck Granary property. Um, I believe, did we get something in our emails on that?
Yes.
With the minutes, so good, it's the agenda. Okay, did everybody have a chance to look at that?
Yes.
Did anybody have any questions or, well, just set the public hearing? Did you have anything you wanted to share with that, Jeff?
Uh, no, other than I've looked over, the application is complete. Um, I was hoping that the petitioner would be here tonight, so you guys would be able to ask him questions.
I mean, because last we were at, this was not going to fit, um, as far as industrial, correct? Because of the setbacks.
There are, there are issues along with it, yes. I mean, the, it becomes an irregular property if it becomes light industrial. Any redevelopment of the property would have to then be gone through, you know, the site plan process. And during that process, some variances may need to, would potentially need to be requested for setbacks. Potentially... I have to look at the ordinance exactly, because I'm looking at the frontage widths. Um, that's not, that's not typical of a existing parcel that does get rezoned. So, I mean, it wouldn't be a, wouldn't consider it completely disqualified factor. But it could be a factor for next consideration.
And he also, just to add, he made an additional request for ZVA.
That is correct.
For his, um, the old hardware store property. Correct?
That is correct. And that is currently his own general business downtown district. Um, some of the question is, is some of the services, service people who pass in there that he's leasing into. Uh, there is some question as to whether those permitted uses. Um, I think what they're looking to do is they were looking to, with that, they're looking to have a Class 8 conforming, um, or having a Class 8 non-conforming use plan placed upon that, which would allow, if the CVA puts any conditions on it, would allow that use that he has there to continue and to allow him to make improvements to the building, to the facade, and to the facility as it exists currently. So that's what, that's what they're currently asking for. That would be going before CVA, I believe that's scheduled for, it's later in the month, I want to say the 23rd.
So they go for the 21st?
Is it 20, I'm sorry. It's the week of the 20th, I guess.
At 6:30. Come here, man.
So, what he's coming to us is strictly the elevator property?
It's strictly the elevator property, which I think if you have, you've got the attachments, there's a map showing the status of that property. That's the, that's the granary property, the elevator, and then it's additional lot that's next to it, it's all combined. But it also takes into what was the old feed store. Um, and that portion of the property, there's about eighty to almost a hundred and some, hundred, almost two hundred and some feet um, in front of that property as well. That's all considered part of the same lot. So where Division Street kind of ends, it kind of ends into that property, and it's kind of a ambiguous area where the road ends, where you turn around with the parking lot, it's kind of undefined there.
So that whole other property is going to ZVA then for the...
This entire property, this property here would be coming to us for rezoning.
But the other, the front end of the property?
The front end of the property being the hardware store proper, yes, that was, that's going to ZVA because they are, the zoning ordinance indicates that they are the ones who hear any non-conforming requests.
Okay. So I just want to make sure my, I mean, will he be here? Do you know that? Is he planning to present, or this is all the information that we're going to...
When I, when I spoke to a representative from his company, was asked a question about how do the applications together, I strongly suggested that they be here this evening to answer the questions.
Someone just pulled in, so please.
They will be here.
Okay. Nobody's come in yet, so, but it could just be someone. Right. And then I just want to, um, have a slight discussion about, so let's say this property did move forward, it'd become light industrial, and then as he re-habs the property, then, um, you mentioned parking lot, for example. So that parking lot would have to be brought up to the, whatever the current code is, am I correct?
It would, if, if an improvement were to be made, if you were going to be expanding the parking lot, re... You can repave an existing parking area. If you make any changes to its size, dimension, and number of spaces, then the site plan has to be done. And that kicks in a whole engineering review related to drainage and a whole host of other things that are planning and all sorts of things. So, any additional improvements that will be done out there, um, we would want to see a site plan coming for them.
Do you know if that's an intention?
I do not know what his full intention of...
Or personal.
No, okay. Do you not know what the full intention of going to light industrial is then?
Okay.
Um, there were some mentions about securing bank loans.
Good.
That, but I don't understand, I don't know what the details were there.
It was exactly the way you did that hearing then.
They should be here present at the hearing, I would hope.
Right, right, okay.
Okay, so we'll ask for a motion to set a public hearing for the rezoning of the Chris Holsbeck Granary property.
Jeff?
Yes. Um, yeah, sorry, Marilyn, we have to wait, okay? Until the end. Um...
You aren't open for public, public comments?
Not until the end, Marilyn, I'm sorry. Okay, so, uh, we're going to set this public hearing rezoning. Are we just going to pull the address? Are we going to set the date here? Um, for next month? It's for, um, 3...
31071 Division.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
30171?
31071.
And then next month's meeting is September 4th. And, uh, the standard, do you want to start at 7:00 or do you want to do that at 6:30? I think we can start at 7:00. Okay. Is everybody good with that? Okay.
At what time?
7:00. Normal time.
So, so, a public hearing has to be separate from a normal meeting, though?
Correct, yes.
So with a public hearing at 7:00 and a normal meeting at 7:30?
Yeah.
Or, or you could just gavel it, gavel it, if no one shows up or you've done it 10 minutes, you can gavel it closed and open up the public hearing.
Right.
You can almost just say it, but immediately follows.
Um, no one is immediately follows.
Yeah, that's probably better.
Okay.
Also, that's the first day of school.
It is.
I probably won't be here.
That's...
We close it at that. No, we go out to dinner and all that jazz, I don't... Big deal. Not this year.
Okay, I'll just make the motion to set the public hearing, um, for 7:00 PM on September 4th for the property at 31071 Division Street, New Haven. The Holsbeck Masonry Investments LLC.
Support.
Is that right? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried there? Okay. Sign ordinance discussion. Um, we were prepared, we were going to be prepared this evening to send our sign ordinance out also for a public hearing next month. However, there were some legal questionings of sign ordinances in general in other local communities um, in regards to freedom of speech and limiting that on our signs. So, further?
Okay. Um, first of all, I apologize for, I feel like we got to this point, I also pulled the rug up from underneath us on the sign stuff. Um, back in 2015, um, the US Supreme Court, I don't know if anybody read any of the support information, but I was kind of giving a brief synopsis given the court over with other staff people for the last couple days. 2015 US Supreme Court verdict case Reed versus the City of Gilbert. In that case, um, it was deemed that the local sign ordinance, um, many elements of it were deemed unconstitutional or in violation of the First Amendment of Freedom of Speech because elements of the sign ordinance were considered not to be content neutral. Now, when we think of content neutral, we generally think, what, what the thought has always been is, we can regulate the place, the time, and the manner which a sign is displayed, but we can't regulate the message. And one of the things that we've done to insulate ourselves since this hearing originally came out was the guidelines were to put a substitution clause in your sign ordinance that basically states that for any commercial type of speech or sign that would be available, like for Dollar General came in and got a monument signed. If they wanted to put Dollar General up on there, they could put it up. If they wanted to put up a message that says, "Jesus saves," they could have put that message up. No restrictions. And in that regard, our ordinance is in, is in good standing. We also have a seven rule of law in our ordinance that basically states that if any one portion of the sign ordinance is found to be either unconstitutional, unlawful, it doesn't negate all the other sections of it. It just basically says, oh, you can strike that line out. But, as what the Supreme Court went on to decide in Gilbert versus Reed, or Reed versus Gilbert, was that by calling out different types of signs by their type and then regulating them was potentially an impingement of free speech. Now, give you an example of that. In our, in our ordinance, we have temporary signs, we have banners, and we have political signs. Our political signs have a duration of time that they can be out and a certain size they can be. Then we have a community, a nonprofit can come to us and get a banner signed for a temporary event. That has a different timeframe on it and also a different size and dimension. It happens to be larger in dimension than the political sign. So essentially, the court is saying that, in our case, we would be giving preferential treatment to a nonprofit in their message over a polit- politician in their message. That's just one example. Another example becomes where you start to make exemptions for signs. We have, we start off our ordinance like every other community does. These are the signs that we don't care about and will not regulate. One of them is political signs. But just by calling up, it, basically the court says, if you have to look at the type of sign it is to make a determination, then you potentially have a content-based regulation. So, it opens up a huge can of worms because it hasn't, there's, there's only been three cases that have been heard across the country since the Supreme Court has upheld this hearing. Because there were two, as this, as this case went through the courts, um, two lower federal district courts upheld this city, said, "Yeah, you're right, it's content neutral, it's content neutral, but you're not restricting the message." But then when the court said, "When you look at the type of sign, technically you are, uh, restricting the message." In a, one example, uh, in our ordinance, we say we have an exemption for churches. Churches and public institutions can have a message board sign that has a certain size, and they don't have to pull a permit or do anything for that. But if someone else wanted to buy, to put up a temporary sign with a similar message, we would make them go through a permitting process. So there is a favorability that's being given there based upon the type of sign. So, what I've done is I've gone through the ordinance to the best of my ability, and I'm, I talked to Chris about this. We want to have the attorney look at this as well. I tried to flag all the things that I've been hearing that appear to be content-based. And then, there's some ones that I'm definitely sure of, and there's other ones where I put a question, is this, is this content-based? And these are some of the things that we would need to resolve. How you resolve these things is the big question. We have, we have, if we just talk about political signs, we almost have no ability to regulate a political sign if we call it out as such. If we were to say, because we have political signs, we have temporary signs, we have special event signs, and then we have just our monuments and our wall signs. The monuments, the wall signs, those elements are, are free of, of, of any issues because it has, there's nothing that states what it is. It's just, we're just saying it's a monument sign, and it's, here's where it can be, it can be outside of the right of way, and this is the size of it. There's no special treatment one way or the other.
So is the, is the issue, like, instead of saying political signs, what, is it more so that you have to say, like, we have regulation regarding, um, age, white, like, wire, frame? Temporary, is that? Temporary, no, I can even say temporary, so like...
We could, you could go with temporary signs.
Like cardboard signs versus banner versus, none of them matter what the content is.
And you could say a temporary, we could, and this is what we want to look, this is what we want to check with the attorney and do some more exploration on the next 30 days. Say, yes, you can have a temporary sign in a residential area, a temporary sign cannot exceed the size, and you can have this magnitude.
Is it, can we put a length of time? You have to link the time to it?
As long as it's not content-based.
As long, as long as, as long as one type doesn't get a longer duration or shorter duration.
I'm going to say a temporary sign is a temporary sign.
Right. See, it wouldn't allow us to set a date for when a political sign will go up and when it needs to be taken down.
Right, but if you, but if you put two weeks on it, Pennell's going to put it up for two weeks.
Correct.
Next month's night of election.
Correct. What is, does anybody recall the timeline right now?
Thirty days.
Thirty days, okay. Well, that is certainly political with a temporary.
For political, it's 30 days before and five days after the election, not a temporary.
Yeah, the temporary one.
Yeah, there is a...
Here we go ahead with the ordinance and just let somebody challenge it, so that... Yeah. You, you...
This is not...
Yeah, we could, but I would, I would not absolutely feel right recommending you guys to do that because if, if we pass this, it opens the community up to exposure. That would be really a decision that would have to be made by counsel after they talk to the attorney. I don't, I, I think that's above our pay grade to make that decision. At this point.
Well, the state, you said there's been three challenges in the United States.
There have been challenges.
How many years to it? So you've got to get the, for lack of a better word, the nut job that wants to come to the community and disrupt it and, um, do that.
What we discussed is, isn't there one that's local?
No, there's...
Oh, I thought there was something that...
No, there's, there's not, there's not a local mission in case you were aware of that, that's a bad thought.
Okay.
Um, but what we looked at, we have looked at other communities that have recently updated their zoning. Um, in two cases, the sign ordinance was outside of the zoning ordinance, they didn't touch it. And I think in Sterling Heights, they kind of, they're, they're, they basically are moving ahead and they're electing not to, they've identified the elements in the ordinance, the current existing ordinance that are, that are basically illegal. They're electing not to enforce those, and they've made a resolution not to enforce those until they can fix the entire ordinance. And they're going through that process of... Look, there's a lot of people who are on soul searching trying to figure how you, how do you come up with something that works that lets you to still have control, um, but at the same time doesn't just basically throw your arms up and say, "Hey, any type of sign goes."
What about like a time limit?
A time, a time limit on...
It's probably the only thing that could have control over, is what it sounds like.
Time, okay, time, location, and map. We can still do those as long as we don't call out the type of sign. Because like, one of the examples that the court gave, it, it just seems so benign, is that one of the types of exempted signs that we have in our ordinance is historical marker. I don't think we have a state historical marker in the village. But we're saying, if there was one, we have no regulation of it. But just because we've called it out as a type of sign, as a historical marker, it makes it a content, it's considered content-regulated. So just looking at the ordinance on the face, a judge could say, "This ordinance is, is content-related because of these elements in here." It's hard, I'm even having a hard time wrapping my head around some of the ways it's how broad it can be. Um, and that's like when I went through here and started marking it up and read them, and there's a lot of red here. Um, but I think the areas that you'll see that aren't in red are the areas that we, we can strongly have a footing and stand up. You know, restricting pylon signs, saying that you can have a monument sign in any given district that is of certain size, wall signs of certain size. Those things we can all still regulate. It's just getting around these specialty signs. And these specialty signs would also then include subdivision signs, homeowners association signs. We were going to give an exemption for homeowners to be able to do an A-frame board for notifications. We wrote it in the exemptions. That would be, it's completely content-related based on. So we're giving them favorability over an A-frame temporary sign if you would give someone commercial downtown and want to put one out in front of their business to advertise.
Right, I don't know much to pay the attorney now, however. Yeah, I don't know, I've talked to him. Um, I think, I, I think in this type of case, if it's like a legal opinion, I don't know if there's a charge. I think it's more if it's like they're doing court activities. Well, I thought the hourly, or at least the hourly used to be doing stuff like this, they spend excellent hours doing reviewing an ordinance. So maybe, I'm not sure. Because should we maybe wait and see what Utica does, and then look at their ordinance and let them pay all the attorney fees? Because I'm guessing it's probably 225, 250 an hour for an attorney. At least, it used to be 200 bucks.
Imagine, you, you'd be correct. I do, my, my staff is working in Utica. They are going before, um, tomorrow night, they will be before city council. They are going to put a moratorium on moving forward until they, until they get some direction as well. So they're going to have an exact same position with that. They were, they were ready to approve this month as well.
Look, because this look, to me, it's probably an easy $10,000, $15,000 of village funds to, at the point of this day, if they can research it and figure out, you know, compare it to the court cases. And maybe we should let Utica spend that cash and then steal their buildings off.
And how does that relate to what we currently have?
Hmm?
How does that relate to what we currently have in place?
Well... What we currently have in place is not forcible anyways.
What we currently have in place and what we're almost proposing, both have, both have their issues. I, I would, I would, I would tend to concur that we may want, want to, to survey what's going on outside of the village to get a feel for how we proceed because, um, I, I don't know that there's any advantage in being first in making, fixing this, because generally people who go first get beat up first.
In addition, um, as you recall, Chris Silver told us that they were, the plan was to not, to publicly notify all of these changes at one time.
Correct.
So we have quite a bit of time before that would even happen. We're going to get through the whole, so it is something we could revisit. We could move forward and come back once we have more information. Because our hands are at, with that, just based on that, that then will be enforced anyway.
That makes sense, then, to just...
I would make the recommendation to put it on the back burner and proceed with some other items in the next upcoming 30 to 60 days, and at least get a read on this and return back to it.
Compared to like Utica, how are we in terms, how do we look? Are we in better shape?
I would say, I would say we're vulnerable.
Okay.
Because there's very, there are many similarities going to be laid out there. There are ways. You have your exemptions, you have your, your signs that are called out by definition. You start going through those definitions, you start realizing that if someone has to look at the sign to determine what type of a sign it is, then it's probably content-related. So if to look at it, "Oh, that's a political sign, it can only be this size," then that, that becomes content-related.
Where does that leave us with enforceability on the non-questionable?
No problems at all.
We're still good even though we'll just follow our existing...
Absolutely.
Sign ordinance on the stuff that's more solid.
Mm-hmm.
It also has a history to it as well versus a new one that we would put in place, correct?
True, but I don't know if the history makes a difference once, it, it, once, once you have a, a ruling like this that just kind of negates, what, what you've done in the past was in the past, you have to become current.
Okay.
At least have it be a lawful and constitutional ordinance. But as far as, as far as regulating any of the commercial signs, any of the, any of the monuments, those types of things that come in, we're the same. I think where would be really challenged is if we have a gas station come in and make, want to make some changes. Because just because we call, we give different treatment to gas stations in terms of the amount of canopy signs that they connect with the pumps, and since we call them out separately than all other commercial uses, we tend to, we're favoring them over other uses. That is a general practice that everybody has done with gas stations for decades of science, but this kind of turns the whole thing on its head, so...
Yeah, it's a very different use, though.
I just have one final question for no purposes. Um, all the litigation is done on that, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It, it has been heard, um, three of the justices wrote, um, wrote opinions that were in favor of the court's opinion. Um, and all of the three of them who wrote them, wrote them recognizing that this thing that they passed originally, as it's passed, it's wide as a tunnel if you drive a bus through it. Um, but if you, if you, if you really want to do a deeper dive and look at some of the other things of what the other judges wrote, they recognized that. In fact, one tried to give some guidelines, and, okay, if you can't do this, this is what you still can do. Place, time, location, outside of the right of way, public health, safety, and welfare. Basically, there's ordinance on those things, you should be in the clear. But again, since that is just an opinion, that is not the actual rule. The ruling is, is broader or general. Um, and where this also calls into question, one thing we're talking with the attorney about, it's outside of our realm. Um, this has implications on panhandling ordinances and other types of ordinances that might curtail free speech. Again, I know, I believe we do have a panhandling ordinance.
We do.
Um, depending on, I haven't looked at it, but because it's not ours to look at it, depending on how it is written, if it's written for the express purpose of, of requesting money. There was a case brought in San Francisco, I think it was San Francisco. Someone brought it against, and found that their ordinance was, was content-based because it basically stated a person basically asking for money on the spot. But the challenge was, was the way it was worded, was a person asking for money on the spot, not asking for later, they want to chant, they want food. It gets silly, but when you break it down, it gets, it gets to the heart of the same type of, of regulation. You're, you're, you're making one thing restrictive and you're not making another thing restrictive.
It's okay to pan out, let it take a check. Charge.
Sweet, all right. So, that's what I have, we're going to take it back to the workshop. I got, our staff is pulling our hair out trying to figure out what we're doing. We're talking other, we are talking to other planning consultants as well. We're working with other communities to see what direction they're going in. We just initiated. It, it's one of those things where like, it's a hot potato, no one wants to pick it up. I don't know that there's anybody out there that we've looked at. I don't know that there's anybody out there that we've looked at the last week and a half that can say, that we could point to and say, these guys are the subject matter experts on it and they're the ones just talked to because they've led so many communities through the process. It's just coming right now. We're going to see more and more communities going through this, trying to figure this thing out.
Is Utica going ahead with, working with their attorney?
Yes. In fact, their attorney's already a dependent opinion on it. They did it as a confidential document to city council. I'm hoping that after tomorrow night, once they've received the document, discussed it, that we can copy it and share with the next, because I haven't seen it yet.
I move the back burner and save some money until, you know, let somebody else spend research dollars.
We could leave it, I don't know if it's appropriate, just leave it as a standing item to every month, update on the status of it.
If you guys update where we are with the sign ordinance.
And then go forward with that, so we just leave it as a standing item. So that probably doesn't require a motion, right? Okay. So next subject, ordinance review going forward. So with the sign ordinance on the back burner, discussion as to where we go forward next with ordinances. For...
If I could add, I think with the sign ordinance on hold, I think the next logical place for us to go is to go into the individual districts, take a look at those in terms of their building regulations, in terms of the height, the width, the minimum width of lots. And then allow us, my staff, to go through it along with a map of the community. Because one of the things we need to do is we need to actually take the ordinance, crosswalk it against the map, and see if the numbers make sense to the type of property the frontage is set behalf. We know that our heavy industrial right now requires a minimum of 300 feet of frontage. I don't know where you'd find that unless you assemble all the land from the railroad tracks to Roselle together into one large, start making large parcels of them. So we may want to look at that to make it easier to actually cite additional uses in our heavy industrial and see if there's other issues related to the others. I'm pretty sure we are solid in residential, mobile home, multifamily. I really don't think there's going to be any changes required there. I think what we really want to take a look at is we want to take a look at the general business, general business downtown, light heavy industry. And then one other thing that I'll make a suggestion on, part of the planners report, is that we have a PUD ordinance. We talked a little bit about PUDs before in the past because I think that's how some of the Pembroke symbols were done under PUD. The planned unit development exists as an overlay zone. It can be applied, I believe, in almost all of the zones that we have. But what it allows for is it allows for more flexibility in terms of the density that's allowed for the development and also allows for mixed-use development. So giving an example, I had a gentleman named Martin Benz calling me out a little the other day. He goes, I had a question for a friend of mine about some property he owns in New Haven. He was talking about the agricultural lots that are on the triane between Maine, Grasham, 26th Avenue. He asked, he was asking what they're currently zoned. I said, so, general business. He said, would there be any interest in potentially rezoning that to multifamily? Because I potentially have someone who's looking to do a larger type of housing development. I said, that would be something, they would need to come to the planning commission. I said, I'm certain that the village would entertain any type of growth or opportunity to increase the tax base. But what I did indicate to him is that our PUD ordinance sets a minimum acreage for PUD at 20 acres. And I don't know that we have that many 20-acre parcels left. We may want to change that and bring that down as low as five. Because that will allow us to entertain something there. Because prior to this one, there was another company that came in, actually met with Chris, this really was back in the year now, where they were looking to do like an elder care facility in that same location, where they wanted to have onsite housing, they wanted to have medical facility, convenience retail, all in a package, you know, type of complex. PUD is the perfect tool for doing that. Because it allows you to, allows the community, for us to decide as a planning commission, what that mix should look like, work with the developer to put together a site plan. As opposed to them coming in and saying, okay, we want to zone all multifamily housing, but then we want all these variances. We want a variance to do a commercial retail, we want a variance for a medical or dialysis center, whatever type of things. I think they were talking particularly about memory care type centers, so people all signed up and stuff like that. So one of the recommendations you remain, long story short, is with our PUD as one of our districts, we may want to reduce the size of that to make it more flexible for us in the future. So if you give us the next 30 days, we'll continue to look at the sign ordinance. We'll go through the districts and we'll pull out the things that we think are elements that shouldn't change. And we'll give a rationale for it. We're going to give it to you guys for review. And then what we can do is get your comments and then craft what those changes would be. So I'm thinking if we were to do that, we could have that entire section done by our October meeting, potentially with a recommendation from council for those districts. So if that sounds feasible, we can do that that way. I think once we complete that, the only sections that are really left in the ordinance are things that I want to review with the engineer. It's things like parking requirements, setbacks, landscaping, fence, all those other site elements that are regulated by zoning, but at the same time, they're also looked at by the engineer when the site plans are approved. I think once we walk through that element, we may not have the sign portion done, we might have the rest of it unwrapped. I would think by December, we can do with the entire ordinance and then waiting on figuring out one of the signs.
Um, you're good, let's just go forward, we don't have a motion for you, is that okay? Everybody good? Anybody else have anything to say on that matter?
No.
Matters for discussion?
I have a question for Brian, if he's gotten any results back from the council?
Heard of it.
As far as the PUDs and the permitting through the homeowners associations and being able to stop the permits until they're approved, you know, until there's approval from the association?
Well, I brought it up to President Dilbert. He wanted to have a legal opinion on it. But then I believe that it was brought up at the last month meeting as well. That it was brought up again, it wasn't actually taken. Yeah, at this last month's meeting. I wasn't present, so I don't know exactly how that happened.
So was there an opinion offered, did the attorney review it?
It would be...
Well, I think that you guys had discussion on the last meeting and there was some clarification. I was maybe seeing more...
Just that, I believe it was just that it was going to the attorney, correct?
That was the meeting before last, it was going to the attorney.
Right, we just haven't gotten anything yet.
I haven't heard anything, yeah.
At our last meeting, he was questioning what we really wanted from, in terms of that.
Sounds like he wanted more clarity.
Right. What he was explaining to us is not what we talked about originally. He just gave some confirmation for us. So I think we reconfirmed what we wanted and then he went for it with that information.
Yeah, apparently when I presented it at the council meeting, I don't know, the words that came out of my mouth were not exactly what I thought was said. So I thought I was clearly communicating what we had discussed in this meeting, but apparently the way that I had said it made him nervous. Because the way I had explained it, he thought that I was saying that the building department would need to come to the HOAs for approval. And I said, and I didn't realize at the council meeting that that's how he was interpreting it. I thought I was being clear that I just meant when they come for the building permit, they should have the letter of HOA approval, just like they would do for a fence or anything else. So, yeah.
And we made that clear at the last meeting, you weren't here and...
Correct. Sounds like it.
So I figured it would have got handled at the last council meeting, so I was...
He wasn't at the council meeting.
Mr. Dilbert?
Correct.
But the attorney was?
Um, yes, he was, but it didn't come up because he wasn't there and I wasn't at the planning meeting to bring it up.
Okay. I hope you didn't bang the door on that side, please.
Yeah, I'll take that.
And another thing, I drew pictures here. Because if you look at the setbacks of the homes already on the street, they're setback at a distance. So you see nice, even road homes. The two they just threw up, the sidewalk literally goes about where it fits with everybody else's house, the distance, it's probably 10 feet from the house.
That Pembroke you're talking about?
Yeah.
Are you going to use those pictures or where those pictures at?
I passed them around.
Do you know what the site plan looks like overall? Because sometimes this does happen. I'm not trying to run them.
I don't remember that standing out when I originally saw Pembroke's site plan.
Okay.
You know, that there was jogs in the sidewalk. Keeping with the jog in the sidewalk, you're barely going to fit a car in the driveway. But this is just another one of the things where there isn't enough oversight or lumbar to a building.
Too prepared.
Whether from the building department or from us or from whoever in the association that, you know, you can literally see how rough these homes are.
They're curved streets.
Yeah, so the pictures were hard to take.
Yeah.
But if you go look at it, you'll see...
Curved street down a curved street, the house at that time is going to look most of the house. It's hard to tell from the pictures.
Pictures are not that great, but go take a look at it and it'll...
You know, this could be though too.
Clear sense to you?
I think, did you bring that up?
Did Brian or Kyle brought it up?
On the Cool Street, across from my house, the road kind of curves in that court.
Yeah.
Kind of like a court. They were talking about putting those houses further back as opposed to where they're in line up.
Was it you that...
That was a thorough discussion, but...
The footprint's probably different from the original ones, so.
Because this could be what you're...
If they're centering the house on the lot, you know, my understanding was...
This isn't, it's not like what you're talking about.
Okay.
My understanding is it was brought up, it was brought up at a meeting when we had Greg Windigland at a board meeting. And what was described, and hopefully I'm remembering it correctly, but it has to do with the face of the garage. The setback from the road is based off of the setback from the front of the garage. And the houses that were previously built, the garage isn't necessarily flush with the entire house, but now on the houses they are building today. And that's why you'll see like houses that'll look, the new houses when they're sprinkled in look like it's not all like...
The apartment's like the same way, like the house right in front of me and the house next to it. If you want us to...
A little bit closer.
Go further.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta go look at this because both of your scenarios are not exactly what's going on.
But I know.
Their driveways are so deep that they could fit two cars, you know, deep before it hits the garage. So now this one barely, you're going to have to move the sidewalk, so it's got to be a jog. It's not consistent with the other homes.
The sidewalk should just be set off the street, that should be...
Yeah, but even in our subdivision, like the distance from the garage to the sidewalk isn't consistent.
This is probably about a good 20-foot difference.
Well, because I know like my neighbor, they can fit two cars between their garage and their sidewalk, but I can only fit one, just barely fit one.
Oh, except that design of that house. Because they get the garage set way back.
Right, they're saying there's different, these are different models when they're built before, different from each other. I mean, there's so many variables here that I don't know how you can look at it and say, you know...
You'll be able to see it when you go by there and look at it. My example that I'm making here is that there just is an oversight. Because this will clearly show you when you look at it that it should be the same distance so that at least they look like our old houses.
Well, and that's another thing, the distance is not fixed. Doesn't say it's to be 12 feet, there's a range.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, but for the character of the neighborhood.
But that's not how, the homes are that are there. That doesn't matter. The law or rules are that there's a range of setbacks between here and here, so I have to line them up.
But that's what I'm saying.
I get more character for not that, in my opinion.
That's what I'm saying is that those, that setback of the house would have been laid out as part of what they, where their buildable area should be on that lot from their original plan. When the plan's made, they have a buildable area that's laid out. So with these particular homes where they're setback further from the street...
What street is this on?
This is on the avenue.
Which one?
It's on Pembroke Avenue.
Oh, right, okay, right about there.
Yeah. And like I said, the pictures are very poor, but... I wasn't getting out of the car. It doesn't chill, but it was actually raining.
So is this, of course, Virginia, is that the end of Virginia?
And Kyle is correct, there is a very, there is, so there's a minimum and a maximum. The house, and anywhere in there. But it's far, I'm not sure if it's something you can control, that they're all lined up.
It's very different and stuff like that.
You know, perfectly.
Well, when the plans are done, you give them the buildable area within the lots. And you do that, you know, the homes are lined up.
Right, but there's a minimum and there's a maximum. I don't think it would be our place, as Kyle said, to say, we know the minimum is 10 and the max is 20, but we want you to set it at 15.
But in saying that, though, that's for building a home in a residential spot, this is a PUD. So you gave them where they could build their own.
Well, there's been some changes on this though since the original, and we're all aware of that.
But doesn't PUD, you don't spell that out that much too detail?
Well, I just want to interrupt because we don't even, we don't even know, Brian and I were discussing this. The PUD is currently active. There was the, are you familiar with the settlement? The consent agreement there? You know, so we don't even know really what they're working under over there because that was, by some people's perception, resolved, by Lumbaro's perception.
They do whatever they want.
Well, according to this agreement, they can. So that is the perception. Now, do we, you know, I don't think that's for us to challenge, I think it's probably more... Since with you guys...
The village should be challenging.
Correct.
For the village at all, I would think they would have had to have at least have done a PUD.
Or stick to it.
Or make an agreement to stick to it, but are they obligated to? I'm just throwing questions out there, I really don't know. Are they obligated to stick to it or...
There would have been an original site plan with the PUD that would have laid this out that would have been approved by this body here, the planning commission.
Yeah.
But if there were any modifications to that that were made by the court, I've not seen those. I would imagine those records are in the building document, they should be there at least. If I recall, what I had heard about, there was a consent judgment, but I think, I don't know how much changed the dimensions of the lots or the elevations that they're building in it. I thought there was some type of agreement or some type of ruling that the developer would not have to pay certain fees to the village in terms of the TAC fees for the sewer, the water, that somehow the village was putting the bill on those.
Well, this had all been given as our planner so that you and the building... In fact, you know what's going on. To me, this is what I see, is that they can just do whatever they want because no one's overseeing it anyways. Nobody knows anything for sure, except that they're building whatever they want and we're letting them. There's nobody looking over it.
I think that would maybe be a better discussion for maybe the building department and then probably the council. Maybe they need to have a discussion of, you know, what information does the building department have? And is the council aware that that's what they have? And are they showing that, yes, they are following the plan that was set forth, the consent judgment, whatever it said? I think that's a discussion for those groups of people. We're not making any decisions regarding it, so...
No, we're just maybe the rules, turn them on the follow.
Well, no, not necessarily. Rules were set at the table regarding that, but those rules were, what's the word when you... They were overridden by a consent judgment.
Yeah, but it doesn't sound like anybody knows nothing for sure. That's what I'm trying to say.
Well, it sounds like your question is who's providing the oversight.
Yeah.
This is exactly what I'm looking at. No one is providing oversight.
How do we find out who's providing the oversight? It's a question.
You're right, that's exactly what I'm looking at.
Rob, would you be willing to take that man and ask them that you would either speak to... I think it would be appropriate that you would let the council know that you're gonna be having a discussion with the building department. And would you be willing to take that?
There ain't many dollars though.
Well, then.
I'm not a good person to.
How long does it take this to come?
Pardon?
How long would these pictures take?
Um, just before I left, um, and I didn't go back to the office, I was gonna email it to you, um, so. Twenty-eight, maybe, the twenty-seven?
Very current bills, I guess, the information should be ordered for, kinda easy to get.
Yeah.
You know. Sure there's a reason for it.
Is that maybe something you could, of course, go with them, maybe email and make a phone call to find out?
I'll give it a shot, but I don't think it's really something.
Well, it's definitely with Brian to take the council, if you.
Well, go look at it, Brian, and see what you think.
Yeah, I'll take a look at the, at the property.
I think it was pretty obviously poorly done. You know, when you've got all the houses setback so many feet from the street, and then all of a sudden you need two new ones, which already don't look anything like the neighborhood, are sitting on the front of the sidewalk. You know, where the sidewalk has to be moved in order to accommodate what they're doing. Now, on your PUD, where it sets the foot from where the street, where the sidewalk lands, and all those things are on there. So it's not, it's definitely not following. It, it tells you how many feet you gotta put the sidewalk from just curb and how, you know, all those things are in your PUD. So it's definitely not being followed, that's what I'm trying to get to, is that everything we do here, to me, is kind of a waste of time, we never follow up, make sure someone follows up on it anyways. We might as well leave it all alone, because it's just a waste of time to do something and no one's gonna do it anyways, they're just gonna do what they wanna do. That's what I feel like, I feel like I'm wasting my time.
You can't change the past, but we can make sure the future is.
No, this was done a couple weeks ago.
Right. I mean, with that whole agreement, that whole PUD is in the past. So we have a chance to review, we have a chance to review the, the new, the PUD ordinance and review future PUDs, so that something like this doesn't happen again, that's where we can cover that, it'd be helpful. There's nothing you're gonna be able to do about it.
And we should really find out what the consent says to find out, we, we only know the information from that board. I mean, there could be a lot more detail in there than what we're on, right? So it's probably, I think that would be a good place to start.
It may be nice that we did it too.
It'd be, it'd be good to have that just for the discussion of PUDs.
Yeah.
So we can see what happened to it when it got taken in court for a part.
I agree.
So obviously there's something about it that may have borne a role to that.
Well, I have to excuse myself, cause I don't have anybody to pick up my kid, except for me, so adios.
Thanks, Rob.
Bye, Rob.
Back. I know I have the, uh, agreements on my judgment, I just have my, my.
So that would be a good place to start.
Um, another thing that we, um, we did discuss on the phone was all the, all the, the plan for.
What is that, you know?
Was for nineteen seventy-six.
Nineteen seventy-six.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jen. I can't, wait.
No, that's your, that was, I'll get that, he must have, he's totally ignored the.
Oh, he was.
Him and Kyle.
Sorry, we were talking about portraying the property.
Okay.
The question was whether that was twenty years ago or not? It's, if it really was twenty years ago, I don't believe it.
It is.
Just, just for.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, it's fine, okay. Um, we had also talked about, um, setting, um, the, um, oh gosh, now lost four words. Um, the plan for the office, the, um, structure of.
Yes, the, um, the, the development, that development handle.
Yes, do we want to look at that next month again?
Yeah, I think, I think we're at a point where we can, that's rather be finalized, I, I think I've gotten through everything with the building department and all of that permitting portion of it. I think we can get put together a final document, if you guys agree.
Okay.
And get something over to them instead of working.
Right, and, but that would require, I guess, we'd have to solid up the, um, the one concern of the homeowners associations. So.
We, yeah, we don't necessarily have that addressed in that, that feedback loops.
We can always have it, that, that doesn't require.
Yeah, we, that, that's been developed, just figured that's gonna be a living document, as our procedures or policies change, we can amend that document, nothing is still in that.
Okay. And then the one other thing that I do wanna bring up, and I'm sorry, I probably should have said something to you about it first, but we kinda discussed it the other day. Could you briefly explain to everybody the concept that we discussed when it comes to Grashit, um, and the.
Oh, and the, and the potential for a, um, a corridor improvement authority?
Yeah, now this was just something we explored, it's definitely not something I want to put on the table right now, or, um, but I was thinking maybe down the road, like in January, something for us to think about after we finish up the ordinances.
What Jen was asking about is what other tools are out there to potentially, um, promote investment in, in an area. One thing that communities do is, um, through the, through the, through the, through the function of tax increment financing, um, there are a number of, um, tools that are offered by the state as economic development tools. Um, how they perform is, is very market based, um, but what they allow you to do is, um, designate an area in your community. Uh, in this case, we're talking about the Grashit Corridor, potentially those commercial properties that are along there. Um, you can create what's called a corridor improvement authority. What that authority does is it actually creates an authority, creates a board of so many members. Um, that authority then can do what's known as tax increment financing. So what they can do is you can go to the assessor, once you've defined a district, you can go to your local township assessor, say, I'd like to get a baseline tax assessment of all of the properties within this district. They'll tell you what all the taxable values are of those, and you total them all up, and that sets a baseline of this is taxable value for the district. Now, if you pass a tax increment finance improvement authority, any investments that are made in that district that increase the taxable value of any of those properties above that baseline tax can be collected by the authority and then be used for improvements in the corridor. And those improvements could range from anything from planting flowers to a facade improvement program where you're helping improve businesses, um, to even, um, there's, there's a wide range of things. The, the reason I hesitate saying in a corridor improvement authority is we only have one such authority in Macomb County that I'm aware of, and that is in Harrison Township, they just created one in Jefferson and Shook Road. They're looking to create, they're looking to re, um, vitalize that little commercial district that's there. They wanna tie it into a larger plan than they have for the waterfront edge, go south of there, and you get to an area, let's tell the, it's where the, uh, Clinton River Cut, where the spillage comes through. The DNR has a little launch there, there's a marina there, so they're trying to kinda build a little marine district there. Um, they've been collecting for three years, they've made some improvements, they've been able to put some money aside because of improvements that have been done in the corridor. Uh, they've turned it around and done signage, they've done some branding, things like that. Um, probably the best example of a tax increment finance authority, actually, they go to the counties, the city of Richmond. City of Richmond, over thirty years ago, established their tax increment, um, they basically called their TIFA District Tax Increment Finance Authority. They included, um, almost all of their downtown Main Street from the entry to the community down in Luttonville, all the way up to the north end of town where the, uh, the Orchard Trail, Trailhead Park is. They include their school district properties and all of their properties that make up the Park Complex in the historic district. Um, over the last twenty-five to thirty years, they have been able to collect those tax dollars and releverage that investment in the community. They've made investments in the park using that, they've made investments on Main Street. They have over a period of time, um, they have run a facade program for a while, they were helping businesses. They were able to purchase property that was for sale that they wanted to down, or put on the market. They have a green, green property, I think it's next to their hardware store, or the old city hall, if you guys have forgotten with Richmond at all. Um, it can be a great tool. Um, the, there's, they'll be detract, if, if you go forward with a, with a TIFA district or general area, you detract, you're saying, well, that's taxes that the community won't get because they're being siphoned off. But in a lot of cases, without the authorities, the art of it is, if you didn't have the authority to prove the district, the investment wouldn't come, you wouldn't see it anywhere. Um, but then also, with any of these authorities, um, a board is established, a plan gets put together for the district. It identifies the types of investments, they can identify specific goals and objectives that are to be, um, achieved by that authority through the collection of that tax, uh, increment dollars. Um, some communities, once they've achieved those goals, will disband the authorities. But most of them are seeing that those authorities, after they've been in business for twenty-three years and you've been making, collecting that revenue, that what they're doing is they reassess their plans, they reissue a new plan and set new, set goals moving forward. So it is an option, I don't know how much it will benefit us without there being substantial development in the corridor. It's something that could be a long game item. Um, uh, if we knew that, uh, if we knew that six months from now, uh, if we were, if one were to be established six to eight months from now, that we had major investment coming and it could be a little bit, you know, or say Tractor Supply wanted to expand or something like that, someone who's existing in the corridor. Um, it is an option, I just, earlier, we were just discussing it, because it is a tool. It's one of the few tools that the state has left communities with. There's been a lot of tax incentives, there's been a lot of different other types of, uh, attraction items to bring other businesses into communities, and as the state has whittled away those programs, the programs that have remained, um, and that seems to have support from, on both sides of the House, the legislature, are the tax increment finance capabilities. With that said, if you guys want more information, we can get you guys more on it. Um, it's, it's kind of a long road to set one up, I mean, if you do have to create an authority, have a board that gets established. Because it is an authority, it has the ability to levy, it's considered a taxing body. So the, the body that you set up for that would be very similar to the HCMA Parks or the Great Lakes Water Authority, cause they are another entity that kinda sits over the community, but that has the ability to collect those taxes.
Kinda like the Health and Authority.
Exactly, yeah, you guys have one or else that would, it's very, very similar.
Okay, I just wanted to throw that out there for people to think about, that's something, we'll jump on anyway, but maybe when we're done all this, maybe.
So the last two years planned out, planning commission out.
There we go, that's right, work. Um, anybody else want us for discussion?
Um, good for thinking, I like that, thank you. Oh, you're welcome. Uh, just two things, did, did you raise your emails, were they able to help you?
Yes.
In the office?
I sent, I sent one out to everybody who flavor, oh god.
I believe I did.
I think I did.
Did I?
Yeah, pictures by those that I captured.
Yeah.
I'm still getting mixed though, I'm getting the village email and I'm getting my personal email.
I'm only getting personally though.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm still getting on my personal, which.
I think, I think Karina needs to get a list of.
So, yeah.
Everybody's.
So what I would like, well, to propose is I will put together an email on behalf of the Planning Commission, I'm willing to, I should say, and I will send it to all the different bodies saying that this is moving forward, this is our means of communication.
Perfect.
And that, you know, we would prefer not to, our personal emails moving forward. Does anyone object to that? I will, it will happen in, um, the next week or so, I, I'll put a date, I'll give everyone about a couple days to.
I personally, frankly, I check my work email much more than I would go in and log into this village email. So I mean, if you need, need to get something sooner rather than later, it's gonna be.
So do you have, you do have a village email set up though?
I do.
But it, it's really, um, it's really the most appropriate and professional method of communication.
I have like four or five different emails, so I mean, some of them are joined where they all come to my work email, this one particularly is not. Um, I mean, if it's something that needs a quick response, it's probably gonna get responded too fast or it goes to my work email.
Right, so is, whatever you're comfortable with, I guess, I just know myself, and I, I think many other people agree that, um, it's just not in our best even personal interest that it's going through our personal email, because that exposes all of your email then to any FOIA requests. And I don't want that, you know, in my personal life, and I don't think anyone else does, we get this.
I think they would have fun with all my emails, I only have about thirty-five thousand.
In my opinion, is if, if someone wants to FOIA a personal email, it's been very difficult for me, it's to get your, access your personal email without getting court orders and stuff like that.
I understand that, but that comes at an expense to the village, that's what I'm trying to.
Boy, right, exactly, so that's why I'm saying that we should use the village email, just because, you know, for someone who's trying to get FOIA requests before from emails, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm only going to want to use village email just because it's the right thing to do, because we shouldn't be, there's no law that says elected officials, you have to use village email, but. What I would recommend doing, um, is set up your village email address on your phone and then email it. Um, because I find, if I see the notification on my phone, then I'm at least more apt to go log into the webmail and check it.
That's what I did.
Because like when I'm at work, my, um, my company network, I could log into the village webmail for about five or ten seconds, and then I get logged out, um, automatically, so it's a real pain in the butt on my network. Uh, but at least if I have it on my cell phone, I know, oh hey, I got an email and I need to check it. I was trying to see if there's a way to auto-forward.
I was gonna ask that, but I don't, cause I, I'm not familiar with that auto-forward thing, but I wonder if that would be an option.
My MSN and my Macomb County email, I'll go through my phone into one.
I see.
Email thing, I don't know how it's done, but I don't.
Yes, I'm lucky.
Yeah, I would say just add it as another.
Well, and.
I don't, yeah, I'd have to figure out how to do that.
I don't think there's anything really pressing here that has to have an immediate response, would everyone agree with that?
Right.
So, don't, I don't want you to feel pressured, like you're missing out on something.
If the law's important, we can always.
Yeah, probably, it's our job.
And I have, I've gone on and I've logged in, but there's nothing, no email there, but then it seems like, I mean, Josh's email comes to my Macomb County email, and then I see it right away.
Right.
And I mean, that's my preference, I get it quick, so.
Richard, your.
Well, that's up to you guys, whatever you.
Have the emails, these are the access to my FOIA too, probably. Easier than the Gmail.
So if we wanna pause on that for a month, I think about it until next month, and everybody, we can collectively decide we want to use that month or not. I would prefer that just my village email gets used personally.
If I may suggest, just, cause we are so, kind of so close to, um, maybe we pick the goal of like the, the next crew coming in. So when our next clerk comes in, she's in there with a clean set of.
I like that.
Emails, and that way that, you know, the, everybody transitioning, they'll be transitioning anyways.
Yeah, I like that.
Right?
Yeah, that's, that's a great idea.
Maybe in the next month, I can go on and try and see if I can. Yeah, and that gives us all a couple months to learn to figure it out, and I think less work for.
What else?
Yeah, everybody, yes.
My mail?
She just seems like the one. No, I didn't.
Well, you can download that same app that.
Should they add it here?
And just the second thing was is, um, in, in defense of Rob, the lady was very passionate about their rules, and I am as well, I'm a real follower. But I believe we had a discussion early on, and we started this venture that not only were we gonna do all of this work, but we had intentions of then working with council and figuring out methods, procedures, and policies so that all of these rules were enforced. So I just wanted to say that, and I will, um, also have a conversation with Rob, he may have missed it, so I just wanted to, we do support.
That's what it looks like.
Rules, we want the rules to be upheld.
Right, I agree.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think, um, and I don't know if I had the chance to actually give an update back to the planning committee based off of my conversation with council regarding all the legal stuff, because I wasn't at the last, at last month's meeting. Um, so we had discussed the whole method of like, how do we wanna go about this? Do we want planning to get just boom, slap down a big thick stack and say, here you go, council, this is everything all at once? Um, the, the, I believe, pretty much what the, what the, um, output was is that we can kind of piecemeal it to them, and we can vote and approve on it piecemeal, but then the actual publication of it would be all at once, because there's costs involved with that. They don't wanna go and do a publication for just the administrative updates, and then a publication just for sign, signs, and then a publication just for this. So, um. So, um, uh, that's, the administrative updates was being reviewed by the village attorney. I had informally gotten the confirmation that they are okay with it. They did not have it at last month's meeting, so this month I'm gonna make sure that they do have it. So we will be voting on the administrative updates at the August meeting.
Anyone else matters for discussion? Plans report?
Oh.
Uh, just call the comments, Marilyn. Marilyn?
No.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't come to talk to you guys.
Oh, okay.
I can't see this guy right here.
All right. Okay, so then.
Who wants to talk over with you after I leave? Fine, Danny.
Did you raise your hand on Marilyn and give a comment earlier? And we had to put it out?
Uh, that's okay. We'll wait till you're open house.
I'll look.
I was gonna give you some advice because I doubt if those people were there before.
Oh, okay.
But, uh, go ahead and get your feet wet.
So, uh, motion to adjourn at eight twelve?
So moved. All in favor?
All right, support.
Oh, sorry.